Dayton City Commission Meeting will now come to order. Please rise for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. This morning, the invocation will be given by Commissioner Joseph.
I'm sorry, Mayor, it was the Commissioner. Is this our prayer or my prayer today?
Yes, sir.
All right. I'm actually going to turn over to Commissioner Turner Sloss for a moment. Commissioner, please.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Mayor. I ask for us to have a moment of silence for Dave Johnson. Mr. Dave Johnson was a longtime employee of the city of Dayton, I believe, over 37 years. For us to have a moment of silence for him, as well as Ms. Peggy Johnson, who is the wife of Mr. Jim Johnson for WDAO. And please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Mayor.
Commissioner, thank you.
Dear Lord, thank you for your many blessings. Thank you for the blessings that those who have passed have been to us and the city and our residents. Please help us to continue working in their legacy, continue to do good work for all of our residents. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Ms. Blackshear, may I have the roll call, please?
Mayor Mims.
Aye.
Commissioner Joseph.
Aye.
Shaw.
Aye.
Turner Sloss.
Aye.
Okay, may I have a motion then to approve the absence of Commissioner Fairchild?
So moved, Your Honor.
Second.
Okay, we are probably moved in second to approve the absence of Commissioner Fairchild. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Okay, then may we have a motion now to approve the minutes from the July 3 meeting?
So moved, Your Honor.
And I'll second.
Okay, second. We're probably moved in second to approve the minutes from the July 3 meeting. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Okay. So, right now, we have any communications or petitions?
There are none. No, I'm sorry, they've been distributed, Your Honor.
They've been distributed already. Okay, good. Ms. Blackshear, do you have any additions, deletions, or comments to the calendar?
I have none, Your Honor.
All right, Ms. Dicke, any additions, deletions, or comments to the calendar?
Your Honor, I have no additions or deletions to this morning's calendar. I do have a couple of items I'd like to highlight. One is an award of contract with John R. Jurgensen for 2024 residential asphalt resurfacing. It's our second contract. And resurfacing at Airport Terminal Drive. This is a total of almost $5.8 million in resurfacing investment. 14 neighborhoods will be touched with this contract. Those neighborhoods are Cornell Heights, Dayton View Triangle, Hillcrest, Madden Hills, Mount Vernon, Old Dayton View, Princeton Heights, Residence Park, Riverdale, Roosevelt, South Dayton View, Westwood, Greenwich Village, and Northern Hills. So we're excited to keep bringing investment like that into our neighborhoods and at our airport. And lastly, Resolution Number 6809-24, which is item 8 on our calendar, is an exciting opportunity. This is a $2 million grant that we received for the first time, and it will provide for us funding to do a street tree inventory, urban canopy assessment, and an urban forestry minute management plan, which hasn't been done since the 80s. So we're excited about that. And also, will involve tree planting in the public rights of way and hazardous tree removal. So this is a $2 million grant that we're excited to receive and look forward to. We'll be later on doing an RFP this year, and then work will start in 2025.
Okay.
So that's all I have.
That's good. Thank you. Ms. Blackshear, do we have any citizens who want to speak on calendars?
There's one citizen who has registered to speak. I would like to state that there is a three-minute time limit. As you address the commission, we ask that you state your name and address for the record. At that time, I will turn on the green light. When the green light comes on, you will have three minutes to speak. After you have spoken two and a half minutes, a yellow light will come on. You'll have 30 seconds remaining to speak. When the red light comes on, you'll be asked to cease your comments and to take your seat. To the audience in attendance, please be mindful, this is a business meeting, and we kindly request that during this portion of the meeting, you refrain from any hand clapping, finger snapping, and conversation that will prevent the city commission from hearing the speaker's comments. I call to the podium John Austin.
Name and address for the record, please.
My name is John Austin.
Pull that, pull it down.
My name is John Austin, formerly of Dayton, Ohio, now of Cincinnati, Ohio, 6736 Stowe Lane, Cincinnati, Ohio. And I am rising to speak in favor of item number 7 on the agenda, the honorarily renaming or naming of Coart Avenue as Joe Madison Way for a two-year period. I'd like to begin by saying that Joe Madison is, he is difficult to analyze and describe and to talk about because he's done so much. And my problem is not that I can't speak about him. My problem is to consolidate and just cut back a lot of things that are important that he's done over the years and just hit a few points to give you a bird's-eye view of who he is. First of all, Joe was a broadcaster for over 40 years in Dayton, Ohio, and he passed away last year, for your information.
Yes.
But Joe was a radio broadcaster, but he was an activist, and he liked to call himself radioactive. That is, he was out there in the streets campaigning and crusading for all the right issues. Joe Madison had a show at the time of his passing on Sirius XM Urban View, Channel 126. Joe was voted one of the top 10 most 100 important radio talk show hosts in America over a dozen times. Just a few more things. The people that Joe communicated with were people like former President Barack Obama, Majority Leader of the Senate Chuck Schumer. These are people he spoke to on a regular basis. He called them, they called him, for his advice and his thoughts. It's just how much they admired him for who he was and his disposition on the issues. Joe, in 1986, the NAACP President Benjamin Hooks at the time appointed Joe Madison as the organization's National Political Director, and at that time, he did some things that were unprecedented. He took it to the road. He organized marches throughout the country. He registered thousands of people to vote, and he was a major factor as far as the election was concerned. Joe also was an internationalist. Joe went to Sudan on several occasions. Joe partnered with a Christian organization called Christian Solidarity, and the end result of their efforts were they were able to free over 7,000 slaves in Sudan. And at the time, you could pay less for a cow than for a human being. And so this mission was very important to Joe. He wasn't just thinking about this country or this city or this location. He was a man of the world. In 2013, he was selected to join the Red Cross Board of Governors, which he served until his passing. In December 2021, Joe Madison went, well, even before that, well, I'll just skip to this. In December 2021, Joe Madison went on a hunger strike for 73 days. And this was at a time where he was battling prostate cancer. And this effort was to encourage the passage of the John Lewis Voting Rights Bill. That bill did not pass, but it was not for lack of effort on Joe's part. Joe was elected to the Radio Hall of Fame in 2019. This is the most prestigious and highest honor in radio broadcasting, class of 2019. Just let me summarize by saying this. Joe was, he was a son of Dayton. He went to school at Jackson Elementary School. I know because I was there. We both went to school from kindergarten through 8 at Jackson and then 9 through 12 at Roosevelt High School, class of 1967. He was a son of Dayton, but he was a citizen of the world. I cannot think of anyone more deserving of this prestigious honor, and I would urge you to vote in favor of this measure.
Thank you, Mr. Austin.
Thank you very much for your indulgence.
Okay. Thank you so much, sir.
That is all, Your Honor.
Okay. All right. Commissioners, comments on city manager's recommendations?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor. Thank you, Ms. Dicke, for highlighting those calendar items. I just would like to uplift the work of Public Works for submitting the grant. Do I have that right? The Public Works Department submitting that grant, calendar item number 8. This is very exciting. Thank you for highlighting the timeline as well in terms of 2025. So does that also entail like some of the streets, hazardous streets within the neighborhood, or is only in the corridors or?
It's in, it's in the public rights of way.
Right, okay. Very good. Thank you very much. The only other thing that I would like to add, thank you, Mr. Austin, for being here and speaking in favor and commemorating, excuse me, the life and legacy of Mr. John Madison. And thank you for representing the Roosevelt Teddy's. I see you in your jacket. So thank you, sir, for being here, and that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Shaw?
Yeah, well, I too just want to thank you, Mr. Austin, for bringing this forward. Joe Madison was a great man and a great Daytonian, represented us well, and talked about Dayton often from his home in Washington, DC. But yeah, I'm just really honored to be able to vote in favor of this because of his great work for the NAACP and so many other kinds of avenues that he, you know, put his weight forward on. So thank you for that, Mr. Austin, and look forward to this.
Thank you. Commissioner Joseph?
I agree with my colleagues, nothing further to say. Thank you.
Okay. You know, two of his favorite phrases were basically, what are you going to do about it? When individuals would call his radio station and complain about different things across the nation or in their particular city, he was always asking individuals to name the two senators in their state, and sometimes they could not do that. He'd ask them to go back and research the information, then call them back. The aspect of make us better, and he had a campaign a few years ago where he was getting individuals to buy those T-shirts or sweatshirts about make us better. And that is something that applied to almost everyone in every community. Make us better is a very, very strong phrase. You know, I was honored to be invited to do a proclamation at your class of 1960. I think it was a couple of weeks ago. And so, of course, I was donned in my red and white, you know, of course, that'd be my favorite color. So, you know, for those who didn't see me, I got pictures. Red pants, no, some white pants, white shoes, red jacket, of course, and they made great proclamations, had great conversations with a lot of individuals who were there. They were individuals who graduated just a little bit before me, and I knew many of them, especially some of the athletes who were there as well. And we did have some conversations about Joe Madison. So again, it's our honor to have the opportunity to vote on this request. Okay. So with that, I take a motion then to approve the city manager's recommendations.
I move to approve the city manager's recommendations.
Second, Your Honor. Thank you.
Good. We're probably moved in second to approve the city manager's recommendations. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Okay, legislation, Ms. Blackshear.
First reading Resolution Number 6808-24, honorarily naming Coart Avenue as Joe Madison Way for a two-year period. First reading Resolution Number 6809-24, authorizing the city manager to accept a USDA Forest Service Urban and Community Forestry Inflation Reduction Act grant from the USDA Forest Service in an amount of $2 million and zero cents. That is all, Your Honor.
Okay. Then, Ms. Blackshear, do we have any citizens who are registered to speak?
Your Honor, there have been three citizens who have registered to speak, and I would like to state that there is a three-minute time limit. I call to the podium Tasha Roundtree.
Good morning.
Name and address for the record.
Oh, Tasha Roundtree, 4609 St. James Street. Good morning, Commissioners, Mayor, City Manager. I'm here this morning on behalf of Wolf Creek Neighborhood Association. I'm here because we have a problem in our neighborhood that we try to address in a humanitarian way. It has grown out of control. We have had a homeless camp that moved from Southern Dayton View to Negley, to the Paul Lawrence Dunbar Street, right down from the Paul Lawrence Dunbar House. The students at Dayton Leadership Academy and myself received a grant for $1,500 where we reclaimed Eden Park. The city of Dayton actually came and cut down, Mr. Stovall came down and had his crew cut down trees and overgrowth. We repainted, refixed up the park, and now this homeless camp has eaten all the kids' food that we grew. They ate all the food. They redirected the water so that they could create a shower system. They have a bathroom in the back of the bushes. They are eating. They are living there. They say the police have come there several times and have not had them move or disperse. I have the 420 church with the Flying Poets. We've had them break into the church several times. At one point in time, I had to call Dayton Police to say, first off, I called to say we had, we thought we had kids that broke into the church. So when I called and said, I think it's kids in this church, so I'm telling them, hey, come out of the church because I'm calling the police. Dayton Police came down, four cruisers one way, six cruisers the other way, guns out. It triggered me to have a panic attack. I started crying because I thought, if they go in like this and one of these kids end up dead, I'm the one who called the police. When they went in, they came out with an adult woman who was ODing, who they had to Narcan. And I said, officer, the next time I say, you guys can't go in there like that. Remind me at this moment because they don't know what they're going into. So I appreciate them on that day, but this is getting out of control. If I had not been there giving a tour with Five River Metro Parks, she would literally be in this church dead, and we would not know that she would be in this church dead. I don't want the kids to walk down the street and we find a dead body at the park that we created for the kids. This is a neighborhood where we don't have any traditional parks. There's no swings, there's no slides. We don't have a boys' club, we don't have a Y, we don't have a library. We have nothing in this neighborhood particularly for these kids to do. They have to walk and go to a different neighborhood to find something to do. I have 12 churches in my neighborhood, not one of them is passing out food. I need some help.
Okay. Thank you for your comments.
Veridus Green. Good morning. Veridus Green, 3925 East 3rd Street, Dayton, Ohio. The city's commission meeting is possibly my last as a citizen of Dayton. Due to a number of circumstances, not the least of which is environmental issues related to black mold caused by negligent property managers, I will be moving across the country. I come before you once more, possibly for the final time, to try to get you all to listen with more than just the nonchalant attitudes that I have been greeted with more than once by most of you. And please forgive me if I lose my breath and need to pause, I am dealing with pneumonia. I am and always will be grateful that our voices were heard regarding the income tax renewal containing the housing bucket. However, we still need to know what's going to happen with that money, so I'm here asking once more that access to legal counsel be made readily available and better inspection policies be implemented to protect tenants facing eviction environmental hazards. We, as the Dayton Tenant Union, are trying to be proactive. We are working on creating tenants' right education classes and Good Landlord, Good Tenant Network, which will bridge the gap between respectable landlords who need good tenants and tenants looking for decent landlords, and provide a space where the two can work together to better the system. I believe we all want the same thing, to better our community. I am not just here to talk about housing issues. I can't speak to the recent police activity with the shooting of the teenage boy, but I can say that it is depressing and aggravating when innocent people are run off, fined, or arrested for trying to hand out free food and clothing to people in need. And it only took the police a matter of minutes to show up in these events. Not only did this happen once, but twice directly in front of the Statue of Abraham Lincoln on public property that taxpayers pay to upkeep. Yet, when thugs come to my door threatening my family and then causing over $1,000 worth of property damage, it took the police five hours to show up, and the detective has been virtually nonexistent. I wasn't even sure there was one until I tracked him down myself a month later. I'm frustrated I couldn't be more service in my time here, but I'm happy to be leaving. Raising a family in the city is proving to be unsafe, both physically and mentally. I know many others stuck here and wishing the city's leaders would step off their pedestal to try to understand what they're going through. As I see it, you'll continue to ignore this situation. You could possibly take my remarks personally and respond with comments as such, or by some miracle, you'll take notice and walk a day in our shoes. Try coming out of your homes and experiencing renting a home in your city. Pretend you make $25,000 a year and try calling a few rental companies, tour a house or two, and experience the things everyday people have to live through. It may change things. Thank you.
Hey, thank you for your comments.
Thank you, Ms. Green. Darrell Seiler. Name and address for the record.
Darrell Seiler, I use P.O. Box 24, Dayton, Ohio, 45401.
You may begin.
Okay. I'm glad I'm here in front of the mayor because I seen the mayor and Ms. Robinson from MVHO met, and I want to give insight from a resident what's going on. When the landlord and I signed the lease, we both had standards to follow, but it's been obvious to me that they don't have to follow theirs. If I attempted to utilize my rights, as described in the lease, State Landlord Tenant Rights Act, and HUG regulations, I am retaliated against, harassed, intimidated, mentally stressed out, and threatened with eviction. I had problems with MVHO Tenant Operations Director Andrea McGriff from the day I signed my lease. I complained about maintenance entering my unit numerous times without prior notice and claiming they repaired things they didn't. They recently posted emergency exit maps but got upset because I reported to the fire inspector that those doors were painted shut from the outside. I watched a fire inspector and a maintenance man at one door where maintenance hit it three times with his shoulder and it didn't open. He had to kick it to force it open. Every time I complained about MVHO violating my lease agreement and Tenant Rights Act, I suffered retaliation. I was woke up every night for a month by a resident working with them to help me get evicted. This resident also verbally assaulted, verbally threatened me in front of a police officer. I'm sure he is the one that broke my door lock and threw a pile of dirt on my doormat just a few days after the fire inspector came. I was given a termination letter and told to be out by July 31, and there are so many lies for the reason of termination, and Andrea McGriff has reached out to Hope Housing Program with lies, and now they refuse to help me. I'm concerned about how far MVHO and Hopeful will go to keep me from finding a new residence. Five times, maintenance entered my unit without notice, and the last time, they caused my shower head to spray a sturdy stream of water onto my floor, totally unrelated to why they came in the first place. Several times, I complained to MVHO, requested a meeting to discuss issues, or talked with government agencies. I was given a corrective behavior contract, which included violations of my tenant rights, and given a 30-day notice. It's been 10 months since maintenance supervisor took pictures of things. He said he returned the following day to fix, and he didn't. Attempting to exercise my rights is getting me kicked out, but this other resident has violated so many lease agreements, nothing's done to him. He's a meth smoker, and he, for a month, woke me up every night, sometimes as many as seven times a night.
Thank you, Mrs. Seiler.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you for your comments.
Would you give your phone number to a member of my staff before you leave?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
That is all, Your Honor.
That's it? Okay. Ms. Dicke, any closing comments?
Yes, Mayor, I do have a couple. With regards to Ms. Roundtree's comments, with regards to the homeless encampment in the park in Wolf Creek, we are certainly aware of that. We were aware of that after the Negley camp was removed. And they are, they're, right now, the staff was researching, first of all, property ownership and making sure that the property owner is not aware or endorsing or et cetera, because it's not city-owned property. The second thing is making sure that outreach, our outreach team, which is city and other partners, have connected with the individuals because as we, and this is common practice as we deal with these encampments popping up in the community. First, we have to research property ownership and try and track down the property owner. Secondly, we have to make sure they're connected because we don't, it's really important that these individuals have access and are connected to services. And then we try to help them relocate to shelters or more appropriate spaces than homeless encampments so that they can have safe housing and housing with integrity. So I will provide you an update on where we're at. I know they started working on that the next day that the encampment arrived, so I'll give you an update and packet this Friday.
Okay.
I also wanted to highlight the sad, the sad loss of Dave Johnson. We lost Dave the day before his 37th anniversary. Dave was an amazing employee who was involved in so many things. He was not just a leader within the IT department, but because IT touches the whole organization, he had incredible relationships across the organization as well. And he was instrumental in many of the initiatives that we have done over the 30-plus years, but more so was really a proponent around the ERP system and some of the cybersecurity and some of the stuff that we're really working on now that is crucial to our IT infrastructure. So it is a tragic loss. He will be greatly missed, both professionally for his unique skill set, but also personally. There's quite a wave of impact across the organization because of all the deep relationships he had established. So we are certainly praying for his family and supporting our IT staff right now because they're going through an incredible loss. And then we will move into the hard work of replacing his talent and expertise, but it is a, it is a very sad loss for the organization.
Okay.
And that's all I have today.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Blackshear, any closing comments?
Yes, Your Honor. We have a work session scheduled immediately after the meeting today in the PRC, and the subject will be the UD Fritz Center.
Okay, thank you.
That's all.
All right. Commissioners, closing comments. Commissioner Turner Sloss.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Dicke, and I appreciate your comments, and thank you for providing additional information as to the work that is currently being done in reference to the encampment. And not just that encampment, just having a process in place, your point is well taken because there are a number of encampments. I know there are several in the North Riverdale area that we are actively working to address. And the only thing that I will ask is that, knowing that the staff is currently working with our partners to provide additional service and support for those individuals at the various encampments, is that, once we receive that information and pack it, for us to find a means in a way without any violation or whatever have you in terms of privacy, but that we have a means to educate the public at the, whether it's we're actively addressing the concerns or with the process maybe for residents to call in or additional outlets or services that may be available for those who are experiencing homelessness or who are in fact unhoused. So thank you for that, Ms. Dicke, and again, I look forward for the additional information that may come before because you're absolutely right. We've received a number of phone calls. I know I've been over in the area, a number of residents have been in the area, community leaders, my colleagues have been in the area to assess the situation, if you will. Thank you, Mr. Austin, for being here again. I really appreciate you being here and commemorating the life of Mr. Joe Madison. Ms. Veridus Green, thank you for your leadership. Thank you for standing up and giving voice to the issues and the concerns in the Dayton community as it relates to the housing conditions. community as it relates to the housing conditions. As you know, this is something I'm very, I'm very passionate about. I'm sad to see you go, but again, this is something that I know that I'm personally going, I'm committed to and that I'm dedicated to making sure that we work on the conditions and the availability of decent, affordable housing in the city of Dayton. So again, I really appreciate you and your leadership and all the best in your new future endeavors. And Mr. Sellers, thank you for raising your concerns this morning. As the mayor has already alluded to, please leave your information, and I would like to have a conversation with you after the meeting, just so I can get a little bit more information and we can figure out how we can be of better support to help you locate housing or what we need to do in conversation with our housing partners. And last but not least, I would like to thank the mayor, my colleagues, as well as the clergy, community, DeClare Ministries, and a number of host of other members in the ministry. Ms. Jackson, thank you very much as well. This past, I believe Sunday, there was a prayer vigil that was held. And again, it warms my heart that a number of people pulled together to make sure that we are working collectively to address the concerns and the issues throughout the community. So again, I just want to uplift the work of Ms. Jackson, DeClare Ministries, Omega Baptist Church, Bishop Robert Lyons, a number of members in the clergy commission, community, excuse me, that came out and spoke. And again, we're actively working. There are a number of programs and conversations that are being had to make sure that we put the proper provisions and resources and program in place to address the concerns throughout our community. So thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Ms. Jackson, and the city administration for their work on it. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Shaw?
Yeah, I too want to thank, you know, Caleb Ingram and others that were associated with that event on Sunday. I was out of town the week when a lot of this violence happened and then the response to it. So I want to thank the mayor for his advocacy in that regard and all of my colleagues for doing that work. But also to just highlight the Boys and Girls Club for stepping up and providing a safe place for our youth to talk about this and even providing mental health services and other things. It's really important that our community partners step up in this regard. The city cannot do it by ourselves to remediate this violence, but a collective approach, I think, is the way to go. And I was just so happy that Boys and Girls Club and also Hope Center for Families. So I hope we can continue this work and expand it. It's a great way to do it. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Joseph?
My colleagues have covered it. Thank you both.
Just a real quick highlight, especially on the issue with the Boys and Girls Club. If it was not mentioned, I just do want to thank some of our legislators, the legislators in Columbus, Andrea White, Plummer, Mr. Blackshear, for them bringing $4 million down to help support the building of a new Boys and Girls Club right there on Germantown Pike. We don't always get what we want when we talk to our legislators in Columbus and Washington, DC. So sometimes it is special to at least recognize when they do, you know, bring a few dollars down to the city to try to make things better. So I do want to highlight that. Additionally, I want to thank Ingram and his group for the work that they continue to do in the city. And for those who may not remember, he does that work with the city cleanup, where we take a lot of individuals, a lot of churches throughout this community, and have a major cleanup as far as the city is concerned. They also are working with us to help us with the whole issue in terms of violence. So pulling together ministers and other individuals who are concerned about the city and the violence, I really very much appreciate that. So again, Commissioner Joseph was there, Commissioner Terrence Los. Okay, yes, ma'am. You have something?
Yes, sir.
Come on, to the mic.
Thank you.
This is the real ball, so everybody just will let you know what's happening.
Good morning. I'm sorry for interrupting our meeting, but I have something special on Valetta Jackson. And I have never ever done this before, so I get an opportunity to present some service award pins. And I have four. And Mayor, I have Darius Beckham, who has five years of service.
Okay.
Come on up, Darius. Don't want to give him a round of applause, please, then? Thank you. Congratulations. You can have a seat now. Go ahead. Next person, and I'm doing this very quickly, the next person for 10 years. Mayor, come on down. You have a award pin right here. I have one right here for you. Congratulations, service pin for 10 years. Let's give it up for my mayor one more time.
Thank you, Mayor.
I have two more to go, yes.
The second one is Ms. Regina Blackshear with, you know, Ms. Regina, 15 years of service with the city of Dayton.
No, I need to come down.
You don't need to come down? All right. Thank you very much for your service. And last but not least, Commissioner Matt Joseph. Would you please come down? He has a total of 20 years.
Thank you very much, Commissioner.
So thank you very much for letting me interrupt. They were in my distance. I can't let another week go by and they start to not be worth. So congratulations to each of you, and thank you for your service.
Thank you. Okay. All right, thank you so much. Appreciate that. You know, last but not least, we did have some additional members of the Roosevelt Group that came in to support the street name with Joe Madison. I just asked that you would stand so everyone can recognize you. Thank you for your continued support of the city and the old Roosevelt School, okay? The largest school east of the Mississippi. I get that from the program last year or last week, so. Thank you so much. With no further business, come before this commission, this meeting is adjourned.